This meeting of the guests in City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Elson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Councilman Echols is absent today and our meeting is being chaired by our President Pro Tem, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We do have a quorum present today and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Jeremy Ward to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the blessings of life and all that you do for us. We praise you that we have the ability to gather and discuss and to just better our city. Lord, I pray for our leadership this morning that you give them wisdom, wisdom to make right decisions and, Lord, we ask that all this would glorify you for it's in our name we pray.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on August the 7th. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the accounts for the week of August the 3rd through the 9th. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor Guyton. Unfinished business, A, is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 425 Broad Street in District 3 owned by Sarah Moss. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on July the 10th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, based on the recommendation of the Building Department, we're going to ask for an additional 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Mr. President, we probably needed to talk about that a little more because we were pretty firm about taking some action in the last school around, so we probably need to talk about that.
Okay, we'll have some discussion then. Go ahead if you want to discuss it. Start on the discussion.
Well, you know, I think the big thing to note here is that, and if Brian is here, is he not?
No.
He's not here.
He's not here.
Yeah, I think the big thing to note is that there have been some recent developments as it relates to that property that necessitate that we do table and do our due diligence as it relates to that. So, I don't want there to be the indication that this tabling means no activity. There's some, I think, and I think this council believes, that there's some significant activity that, again, constitutes some additional review.
Anyone else?
That's correct. No.
Okay. That brings us down to B, and there's a new owner of the property located at 437 Broad Street and no council action will be necessary at this time to be taken.
And that goes back to 425? That's what he just said, there's been a lot of development?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that goes back to it.
Okay.
And Resolution C is ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 211 Ruth Street in District 4 owned by Monica Mack. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on July the 10th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I didn't reach him.
You didn't reach him?
I make a motion, we abate.
Second.
Okay. This is in Mr. Echols' district and he's not with us today.
That was the reason for the hesitation. It is in Echols' district, but he has a problem with it. He can bring it up next week and rehash it if we need to, but I think it's going to be an abatement.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to table, I'm sorry, those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Upstaying.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Number nine. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of alcoholic beverage license at Boomer's All-American Barber Spa Incorporated. They have applied for on or off-premise retail beer and table wine license at 541 Broad Street in District 3. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I, when I first read this today, I actually went in this building this past week, I think it was last Friday I went in it, and just looked around and I talked to the gym, I don't know if he was the owner, there was another lady there, and I talked to a couple people there. Looks like it's going to be a real nice place when they finish it. I think it's Target Day, he told me, to open up was going to be August 31st.
I just want to ask, did you get a haircut there?
No, I didn't get a haircut, but I did ask him about cutting my hair when I was there.
We got a lot of information.
I think he was mostly interested in the massage.
Yeah, we got a lot of information on that last week, you know, haircuts, massages, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
My wife's still thinking about it, me.
Oh, by sending you?
Yep.
Alright.
How about, did you ask Johnny?
I didn't tell him.
I did.
You fixing to by a boogie.
I actually did speak with the lady that was doing, going to do the massages. I think she said she was going to. She was coming outdoor when I was going in. I think we beat this one to death too. Clerk, will you take?
I think so.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 10, new business. Is there any new business today?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution appointing Dennis Tarkington to replace Scott Swan as a member of the Harrelson Avenue Architectural Review Board. So I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider. Plus, I want to amend that to extend Mary Dale's term on the Architectural Review Board and also Carol Davis for another term, so.
Second.
We got a motion in the second. Mr. Legal Assistant, did you get those names on their fours?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Okay, why don't we first ask for unanimous consent?
Oh, okay.
To consider the resolution today. Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted for today. Councilman Stewart also made a motion to amend the ordinance to add the other two names.
Second.
To extend their term, they're already serving on the board, but they were, for another term, really, is what I meant.
It would be for reappointment of those two members. Those in favor of the amendment, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution stands amended.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Okay, got to move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Want to move to adopt?
Yeah, I mean, most people, I think the motion, we approve.
Second.
Has any more discussion? If there's not, clerk, will you please take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution as amended, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution, 300, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider. It's authorizing memorandum of understanding between the City of Gaston and Etowah County Drug Enforcement Unit, DEU. Put that in the form with unanimous.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Can't move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
You might note that this has already been budgeted to $120,000.
No. Was it budgeted?
That's right.
I was just going to say, yeah, it wasn't budgeted because I've been.
For the purpose of.
Yeah, I'm good ready to talk about that.
I want to hear it.
Yeah, I know you want to hear it.
Just don't bring that Democrat-Republican thing up.
Well, then, you better stop your ears up.
There you go, I knew it was going to turn flip.
You know, I mean, seriously, we didn't budget this amount and the reason we didn't budget this amount is because they've been getting funds from the state through a federal grant. And I'm going to remind folk every chance I get because it's important to know who you're voting for and what those folks stand for when you vote for them. You got all those folks who went to Washington, said they weren't going to raise your taxes. They were going to cut the cost of government. Well, they're cutting services to cities and states when they do that. Same thing about the folks you sent to Montgomery. Well, we ain't going to raise, there's no new taxes, no, but they're cutting the services. And then it jumps down to the city. And people want to know why we're having the problems with municipalities and communities across this country, why they're going bankrupt. It's very simple. Folks in Washington, the folks in their state capital are not raising taxes. And then it puts the burden upon the local municipalities to either raise taxes or cut the services because that's basically that trickle-down theory that they've been talking about and that's what's happening here. People want to know why we're doing what we're doing to our retirees. This is the reason, because all these other services are going up and the folks in Montgomery and the folks in Washington is passing the buck to us. And we're the ones who are getting the blame and getting all the heat when we have to come down and make these hard decisions. And every chance I get, I'm going to remind folk as to why we're making this hard decision. It's because the folks we sent to Washington and it's the folks we sent to Montgomery. If they just happen to be Republicans, that's just tough, but that's who's doing it. So if the shoe fit, they need to wear it. But if you've got a problem with these issues, you need to call your local legislative delegation or you need to call your congressman and let them know how you feel about all these services that have been affected by there are no new tax stand. I'm off my soapbox.
Alright. I still think it comes all the way to the top. I think we spent a whole pile of money and now they turn around and we don't have any for the bottom, so that's going to work out, I'm sure, in November.
It sure will.
It will. It'll come back. I still move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, since we're finished with, we're finished with discussion now, we're ready to take the vote. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's authorizing agreement with Gaston State Community College to allow Gaston State Community College Emergency Medical Services students to ride with Gaston Fire Department.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Nope.
This is an ongoing contract, I think, right? I don't know how many years it's been going on, but I think it's an ongoing contract.
These students are people that's taking this course. They have to have so many hours riding, you know, with EMA and training in hospitals and stuff and I think we've did this for a long time.
Clinical training.
And also, too, they have to sign a waiver of release where they'll not hold us liable for anything that happens to them also.
Right.
If there's no further discussion, clerk, will you take the vote on this, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That brings us down to department reports, committee boards, et cetera. I think John Ashley is going to speak about grass with us first and then Mr. Stovall from Public Works will speak next.
I think Mr. Stovall's back there. He's there, yeah. He hides.
You might want to cut your mic on, please.
Hello.
Yeah, how's that? John.
Alright. John Ashley, Community Development, over the nuisance, grass cutting, lots, state and individual. We've had a number of questions come up, just want to try to address a few of them today on the grass cutting. Currently, let me give you the current status, we're cutting off Tuscaloosa Avenue right now. We just recently left East Gaston area and once we get through off Tuscaloosa Avenue area, we're going to move to Oak Park and Walnut Park areas. That's the current status on what we're trying to do. Several reasons right now that we're, I'm not going to say behind, but have had a lot of grass growing. Number one, obviously, is the rain. We did have a drought that affected this back in the end of June. Also, at the start of this year, we started cutting grass about a month early, too. We actually had to start in March. Generally, we start about the mid, middle of April, but March, the grass started growing, so we had to jump on it a little bit quicker this year. We had a budget of $85,000. I've got a breakdown and I brought everybody a copy, something for y'all to carry home and mow all over. I'm going to give these to, I'm going to let her pass them out. I'll put, I highlighted each one's district here. What y'all are receiving is a document that we put together that shows the properties that we've cut in each individual district, how much money we've spent in each individual district, the number of cuts in each district, the date, the amount, and the owner. This includes state properties, individual properties, and I've got those numbers in front of me. Up until June the 30th, from October 1st till June the 30th, our budget was $85,000 and we had spent $78,638. And there's an individual breakdown, like I said earlier, on the number of lots in each district and the amount spent in each district. One thing that I want to bring up, too, also, is the increase over the last few years. I went back and put together some numbers along with other people in community development and we have come up with some statistics to show you that over the last few years, we've increased with state properties. In 2010, we cut 497 individual and state lots. In 2011, that number rose to 524, which was a 5% increase. In 2012, which we're not to the end of the year yet, we're already at 582, which is 11% increase. These increases are due to the fact that people have had properties foreclosed on or they've just left them and abandoned them. We also added this year, in response to over the last few years, the ongoing inclusion of all these additional properties. This was discussed, that we would go ahead and add another tractor crew. We did that this year to cut down on the number of complaints and to try to address them a lot quicker. Over the last few years, we've been getting complaints that we weren't cutting property quick enough, fast enough, whatever the case may be. So we added this tractor crew and up and through, up until June the 30th, we had everything in pretty good shape. And then we kind of hit a little drought right there. And when we hit that drought, we kind of slowed down the process, but then all of a sudden, the rains came back and everything started growing all at once again. So it's basically like starting the year over again and at the start of the year, everything's grown in every district and it all wants to be cut right then, but generally, at the start of the year, when we cut, we kind of get it on a rotating basis and we'll be, we're able to kind of get it under control, but like I said, during the middle of summer, it's like we started all over again. Don't really have a whole lot more to add. We did get to the point where we were about near the end of our budget and that's about when that drought hit, so that did help us to a degree where we're able to add a little bit of money to the budget that we had to try to get us through to the end of September. And right now, we're basically just trying to mow lots that are actually called in by citizens and the main thoroughfares, roads of that nature that are highly traveled and that's what we're focusing on right now. It has, we have had a slowdown on what I call lots that we go out and initiate on our own and we're starting to get calls on a lot of the properties that we initiate on our own, where in the past, we've always been able to initiate those and not have calls on them, but now, since we've kind of slowed down cutting those, we are getting calls on those as well. So, it's an uphill battle, but I feel like we'll be in good shape here, hopefully till we get to October and then we'll start the process all over again and try to control it as well as we can. So if y'all have any questions or anything I can address, I'll be glad to answer anything right now at this time.
John, if you, if you have someone to challenge you on the equity of the number of cuts per district, I mean, how do you respond? I know, I'm sure there's a, there's a reason. Can you respond to that?
Yeah, we have a system where we keep up with the number. We have work orders that we give to the city contractor and he fills those. I sign the work orders to the city contractor and then he signs them after they're cut and provides a photograph and turns them back in to us. And we have an individual file on each piece of property that we cut and maintain. We keep all that information in that file and if somebody challenges the number of cuts or if we've cut it, then we have not only the record signed by myself and the city contractor and the money charged, but we also have a photograph, too, to show that it was in violation when we cut it. So, we have a pretty good system in place to show anybody that challenges us whether or not we cut their property or not. We can usually address that with no problems. That photograph's, like the old saying, worth a thousand, thousand words, so.
John, I don't, I don't know about everybody else, but it appears to me, and I know Robert's going to say something about this later, it looks to me like a 60 or 65% of mine are the state of Alabama. I'm loaded, I got 74.
Well.
Lots. And the state of Alabama is dominant on these things. Now, we've been talking about that and he's fair comedian in Montgomery and I'm CED and I'm definitely going to be bringing this up again. It's already on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
And we got to push to do something about this. I love how you elaborate.
If you will, if you will look at the last sheet on your paperwork, the 2012, I did break it down, out of the 582 that we have cut, 293 of them are state, 289 are individual. This is the first time that state has ever passed individual. And this is a trend that's going to continue. I don't want to get up here and make it sound all rosy, but there's just more state property coming our way and, like I said earlier, it's due to foreclosures and people just moving off and they just let this property roll back to the state and it's just something that is going to continue to probably grow and escalate over the years.
He's going to elaborate, but I'm going to make it clear that last week, I thought I did make it clear, this is not even including what Public Works has cut.
That's correct.
Not including what Parks and Rec has cut.
That's correct.
So, to understand the immensity of this thing is unbelievable.
That's correct.
When it all comes up and has to be cut at one time.
That's correct.
So, I hope everybody looked at last week and understands what I said about that and also looks at this state thing and hopefully Robert will.
I'm going to comment, yeah, whenever you get through, or whatever.
John, I wished you would take a look at these papers you gave us again, right here, you gave all of us a paper. I just glanced through mine and it said we spent $14,955 in District 6 cutting grass. I just glanced through the paper real quick that you just gave us and there's a bunch of streets on there and places that have been cut that actually is not in District 6 on this sheet you just gave me, so that means that my total in District 6 couldn't be right because, you know, there's a bunch of streets on there that's not in my district that y'all have cut.
Well, we went through it pretty thoroughly and we went by one of the maps that was supplied to us through, through the city itself, so that's where I pulled my information from, the district information.
On Herring Street, I'm, this don't really matter, but on Herring Street, over in East Gaston, by the funeral home, District 6, don't go that way.
Well, that shouldn't be on District 6.
It was on here, then there was, there was just a few things that I think we need to just look at on this.
And that, that may be at the end of the list where I included all the city properties that were cut.
Okay, and there was some on Tuscaloosa here that's, that's in District 7, it wasn't in District 6, I noticed. But yeah, I'm just going to bring you up to that.
Well, Billy gave me a couple on Springfield.
Yeah.
I graciously take it.
And yeah, but give or take, give or take a couple of hundred dollars, you know.
Well, they're both state of Alabama.
It's not an exact science here, you know, we're dealing with.
They're state of Alabama also.
Yeah, everyone of them just about state of Alabama. I'm just going to bring that to your attention.
So, I can, I can say then that you gave me a misfigure, too, because mine is $20,000. It's more than anybody, so can I say half of those streets don't belong? No. I mean, I'm just looking through.
Bottom line is, bottom line is, they all belong to the city of Gaston and we've got to cut them. And it's an ordinance that was handed down by the council and, you know, we want to, we want to try to help the citizens, we want to try to cut them, I don't care whose district they're in. I don't, I don't show any favoritism, I don't care what district I'm mowing in, I want to mow in all districts. I wish I had enough people to put one in each district, but unfortunately, we don't.
I think the key thing.
And we, we put this information together fairly quick as it was kind of thrown on me here pretty quick, but.
I think the key thing that we need to be aware of and the public need to be aware of, and I don't know what we can do, again, like Ben said, we're working on this, as I go through this list, I would almost venture to say two-thirds of what I see here probably got the state of Alabama listed.
You did.
Well, like I, like I said earlier, it's, this year, 582 cases, 293 are state, 289, so it's tad over 50% leaning toward the state now. And several years ago, that number was down around 35%, so.
What the public needs to be aware of and what I would hope that they would do is to find out if the lot next to them belongs to the state of Alabama. If so, and if we've got an interest in it for cutting the grass, we got a fire sale, we're going to let it go cheap. And we would hope that those folks would purchase those lots and then they in turn can keep them up and they improve their community by having more property, too. I think that's going to be the only answer at this point in time and hopefully, we are working to get the legislature, those guys down there who said they ain't going to raise your taxes, I'm going to have to put that in. Hopefully, we could get them to pass a bill to make it easier for the city to obtain a title to the property. And that's what we're working on. If we can do that, then we can pass that savings on to the citizens who own those properties next door and hopefully, they'll start cutting the grass and we can get out of the grass cutting business. That's the only way we're going to be able to solve this problem.
I agree.
Otherwise, it's going to get larger and it's going to get bigger and bigger, so.
And there, and there is a procedure, and I think I go over this about every year, but there's a procedure that you can purchase the property from the state if you're an individual and you have property next door to you. And I'll be more than happy to walk you through the process there. My phone number, you can call me, 256-549-4532. If you have a vacant lot next to you, I can look up ownership on it, I can provide all that information to you and I can walk you through a process if it's a state property. I can tell you how to go about acquiring it, I can tell you how to satisfy any liens or anything that the city has on the property. I know that we're more than willing to work with any, any individual party on liens and bills that we may have. We've offered to just about do away with a bill in some cases, but it is a very good point that if you have vacant lot next to you, do a little bit of inquiry and find out and, you know, it's only going to help you in the long run, it's going to keep your neighborhood looking better and it's, it's going to add property possibly to yours and increase that value as well and you may can get it for little or nothing, so I'm all for that.
John, would you please give, give your phone number again so, so that all of our citizens will understand this, this procedure. They need to call you if they're, go through that whole spiel again about state property and city property and liens so that you can talk people through the process of them obtaining a title to property next to them.
Okay, there, there is a process where you go through the state and you can file an application to get what's called a tax title on a piece of property if it's technically owned by the state of Alabama. There is a process, it starts out with some paperwork that you send to Montgomery, they send you back information and tell you what the back taxes are on it and there's usually a little penalty involved. You pay that, you will receive a tax title on it. There's a three-year ride of redemption on that. The previous owner has three years to come back and reclaim that property, but the key fact is if they do reclaim it, they have to reimburse you any monies that you've spent for taxes, upkeep, maintenance, whatever. But it's, it's a process, it just takes a little legwork.[1776.71] Again, I've walked quite a few people through it with no problems, no difficulties, just a little bit of time and effort. But my phone number again, two five six five four nine four five three two. And I'll be glad to help anybody go through the process to try to obtain any state property if it's beside them or around them or... There's also some lots out there that could be looked at that are big enough for a lot of the contractors. I welcome contractors to call me and ask me and if I can provide a lot that's big enough and suitable to build a house on or something of that nature, that's something too that could be looked at from their aspects as well, so.
John, I do wanna tell you that every time I turn in something about some grass being cut and nuisance and abatement, that those contractors you have are really good, hardworking guys that come out there. When they get that lot cut, it's perfect. You ain't gotta worry about nothing, no debris or nothing left there to holla everything off and they really, really, really do a good job. I just wanna say I appreciate you and them for the work y'all put into that.
I appreciate the comments and I know our city contractor does and they do a very diligent job. A lot of people think of grass cutting as getting out there on your old Murray riding lawnmower, but these guys have to get out there with a tractor and a bush hog and go in grass sometimes and abandon houses and they've told me stories about, of course, the snakes and sometimes these abandoned houses, you have people coming out of them and you don't know what they're gonna do. So it's a job that they do outstanding on it and I wanna give them all the credit in the world because they go out and never know what they're gonna face from one lot to the next, but they try to do as good a job as they can and try to, again, improve the neighborhood for the citizens and community at large.
Hey, John, if you'll get with Brian Cox, you know Brian with Ninety-Nine, if you'll get with him and give him this information about who to call, what to do and all that as well as even if there's any question, if it's one that we own, we're having talk with attorney here, Ms. Lloyd, and we're gonna start checking the titles on those that we think we own if they're free and clear, whatever, we can start selling to the people on either side or contractors, but if you get with Brian, he'll get all that on Ninety-Nine. He'll fix it up for you and it'll come up a lot, okay?
I'm all for getting rid of them.
All right.
Any more questions?
Now, that's all we got. Mr. Stovall from Gaston Public Works Department's gonna come and speak with us about grass.
And other subjects.
And other subjects, Mr. Harris says.
I'm Brian Stovall, City Gaston Public Works Director. Had some questions still, you know, who's to cut what. I've got the city ordinance here, section eighty-five, eighty-six dash five, weeds and tall grass, section A, B, and C. Just to summarize a little bit, it says, "Rights of ways and easements must be maintained by the owner in a manner consistent with the maintenance of the owner's remaining property." It also says, "A public authority, which city is Gaston, does not cut weeds, grass, or other growth upon rights of way or city easements." And then it keeps going, "All the other maintenance is responsible with the owner and the property under which the right of way easement is located." And then it goes down in C, says that if property is allowed to become overgrown with tall grass and weeds, then it becomes a nuisance abatement. And that's one of the things, a lot of people call in and ask, you know, you're supposed to cut the grass in the right of way in front of your house and keep it like you do the rest of your property. And that includes a little piece of, section of grass between your curb and your sidewalk sometimes. We mow all the rights of way in the city of Gaston. We do state routes and city routes. We maintain the median on Albert Rains and Meagan and the outside. We do all the city roads. We do, so far we've got three rounds. We have three mowers that, or actually we got five mowers, three mostly we use, two sidearm mowers that reach out and do behind the ditch, bush hogs, side mounted bush hogs we do, side roads with, and then regular bush hogs. And we do all the medians on the interstate, Seventy-seven, Fifty-nine, that's our interchange. We keep it up. We do right here at Albert Rains and Seventy-five, Nine, and we do the interchange at Four Thirty-One and Four Eleven there. So we added it up before. I didn't have it quick enough for me today. It's well over five hundred miles of rights of way that we mow. We keep the, we're hoping to do four, maybe five if we get around to it with the complete round with our sidearm slopes. That's basically what we do. It's a whole lot of grass and it takes a long time to do it and like Mr. Ashley says, you know, you have good days and bad days when it rains and when it don't. And we've had a lot of rain and it's growing fast. We're actually mowing today a lot of places right after it rains, so. Do y'all have any other questions? Is that some of the stuff you was asking about?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Okay.
We talked about it upstairs and we gotta do something because we sending a mixed signal to the public. The ordinance say the public needs to cut the right of way from the sidewalk to the curb in front of their house.
That's correct.
They're responsible. Yet, if there was an election going on in the city right now and somebody stuck a sign out there, the city would come and take the sign up because you're in the city right of way. So you can't tell folks, you can't put something out there, but then you expect them to keep it up. So we gotta do something to make that consistent. You know, I talk about consistency. So if we expect the public to keep the right of ways cut and all that, then we need to give them the right to do some of the things in that right of way they wanna do as long as it don't impede traffic and block traffic.
Right, that's one of the things it says in, I didn't read in the ordinance, "The owner of the burdened property continues to control the property except to the extent that such control interferes with the public use." Sometimes the signs may, you know, bother, can't see to get out, stuff like that. I think that's where they fall in. But, you know, this is the city ordinance, you know.
I understand that. That's why I'm saying we need to look at that very, very carefully because the complaint I get from people is, you know, well, I can't, you know, I put a sign out there, the city come and take it up, but they want me to cut the grass. I mean, if that's my yard, then I should be able to do what I wanna do. So what we need to do is look at that and I know that's none of yours, but I mean, we've discussed that, so the council's gonna look at doing something about that.
Yeah, I agree that we do need to do something pertaining to what type of, what type of control you have over that portion that we're talking about now, easement, as far as signing and other use is concerned. And we will address that. We've got almost two years before you'll be putting out any signs again, so whatever that is, we hope to have that resolved very soon to eliminate the confusion. But as it stands now, as it stands now, we're talking the grass cutting and the maintenance issue of your yard and your lawn and your property and you are responsible for it to the street. Simple as that. Brian, I wanted to ask you this question. It's not grass cutting, but can you give me, give us an update on where we are as far as trash pickup? Because I've had, I know we've had a lot of bad weather and limbs are falling and debris is being cleaned out of people's backyards and things, but where are we as far as picking up that debris and trash? Because I've been getting a lot of calls concerning the fact that people are saying that it's been out there for two and three weeks and it hadn't been picked up. Where are we there?
We are behind and, you know, mostly our trash is, like your garbage, you know, we're gonna get ninety gallons every day.
Right.
With trash, you don't know. When they start cleaning up and the weather gets a little better, you know, used to, nobody got outside because it was hot. You didn't have that much. We get caught up pretty well. We can do it in a week. You know, sometimes as little as three days get over our area. Now that people's getting out again, it backs it up some. We're probably ten days, sometimes seven to ten days, getting all the way around our route. We have one guy sign to each route, each district basically, and they go around and when they finish, they start back and we are behind. We're also doing more with less and it's not too awful bad. If we get calls, we try to, you know, catch them up, but we are behind. But we don't have a day, you know. This trash is so hard because of the volume. You don't know what the volume's gonna be from house to house.
Okay. Can you also, can you also give us a short briefing on what you will pick up and what they are supposed to do? If they have anything other than debris out of the yard, are they supposed to call you or whatever? Give us a short synopsis of that.
Yes, we do collect any construction or building material at all.
You do not?
Do not. That's the responsibility of either the contractor or the property owner. Now, the property owner can bring a truckload, pickup truckload to the landfill as long as they have their ID, their driver's license showing where they live for free. So that's one of the ways we try to do that. One of our biggest problems was construction demolition debris. So we don't take it at all. Tree, brush, limbs, furniture, anything like that's fine. The ordinance says any big stuff like furniture and like beds or mattresses, you need to call and tell us and we'll tell you what day to put it out there so it don't sit out there and become a nuisance and look bad. Now, the limbs and brush you put out there, anytime if somebody cuts the tree besides the property owner, then that's their responsibility to get it up. If we come by and we actually see a tree surging, cutting your, we're not gonna get the debris. And we're never picking up anything larger than ten inches in diameter or three foot in length is what the ordinance says.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Quick, how much of your budget is money, money-wise off the top of your head? Do you devote or help set aside for state properties that we're mowing right now?
That I couldn't tell you that. We have.
Can you get it for me 'cause I wanna use it. Montgomery Thursday.
We cut, we cut probably weekly. We're around the two state right of ways. It takes a little longer than that on the interchanges, but.
I want money 'cause that'll impact them.
That'll be good.
Okay, just tell them the amount of money. I appreciate it.
Brian, why don't you get with Brian Cox and list all of that stuff you just went over? And he can put that up like a notice as well, okay?
I'll do it. I'll give him a, I'll send him a memo. Thank y'all.
Thank you. That is good information because we're learning that more and more of our citizens are tuning in to GITN, Channel Ninety-Nine, and seeing what's going on in the city. So if we can get this information to our citizens, it'll certainly help them to understand, you know, the situation that we're in and what they're responsible for and what their duties and responsibilities are. Thank you.
Okay, are there any more department reports? If we're not, that brings us down to number twelve, Citizens Quest, Matty U. Banks, Overgrown Grass. Is she here? Ms. U. Banks here?
She's here.
If you'll come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the city council and you've got five minutes, please, ma'am.
Five minutes?
Is that too long?
It'd go quick, I promise you.
Yeah, but she got more than that, though.
I better sit back then.
It has been interesting thus far. When I last spoke with Mr. Ashley, with Mr. Truitt, I made my decision to ask to come to the agenda this morning. Get on the agenda and come to the city meeting this morning. Some of the things that we talked about, they didn't have the stats that they just gave us. But Mr. Ashley says he had to do this in a hurry. Now, I see listed here Matty U. Banks, Overgrown Grass. When I went to the city clerk's office and I spoke with, I was told the city clerk was in a meeting with someone. I spoke with the assistant and I asked to be put on the agenda for wild grass. I'm very interested in everything that has been shared with us this morning, but the wild grass specifically that I'm here for today is called Johnson grass. Now, if you're not out of the country, you may not know what I'm talking about, but it has already been said. One picture is worth a thousand words. And by the way, I have property in several districts. Born in Rio Grande, Edward County, been in the city of Gaston since forty-eight. But I wanna share with you my concern of this Johnson grass. My family and my mother and father's estate, the corner of Treadwell Avenue and Cypress Street in East Gaston. Cypress runs from Springfield Avenue to Two Seventy-Eight East. We have a man with a farm tractor that cuts the fields. He cut it this weekend. Matter of fact, he went there Sunday afternoon. He said he chose Sunday afternoon. I said, "I hope you didn't cut it Sunday afternoon." He didn't cut it last week 'cause he promised to get it last week. He said, "The rain forecast says it's gonna rain Monday and Tuesday," so I went out there Sunday afternoon and cut it. But I made this pictures. When he cut the grass in April of this year, there was no Johnson grass. My dad didn't permit Johnson grass to grow in the garden in the fields. That has grown up since the tractor was there and cut in April. I have some pictures of other areas in other districts. This is a follow-up of the one you are seeing. It gives you an idea how tall it is. Once it goes to seed, the seed sprouts and you've got a nuisance. I mean, when I drove up over there and I had been sick hospitalized in, missed a few weeks of even going by the home site, my sister and I, she lives in the area, but I had not been. What in the world, where did this Johnson grass come from? There has never been any Johnson grass on that lot. Now, the birds scatter seeds and God is an awesome God, but I don't believe he sowed Johnson grass down the side of site. Now, since then, and to give you some idea of the height, did I give you one of these? Okay. The height in comparison to the street sign that this Johnson grass has grown. Now, my son keeps the ditch and the bed of the field cut with the weed eater and lawnmower. The man comes in and the vacant half acre on one side of the house, house sits on a half acre. There's less than a half acre near Cypress there. But he cuts from Treadwell Avenue back down the half acre in depth. We keep it cut. He cuts around the street signs with his weed eater and lawnmower. Now, since then, since finding this over at our area, I came out the same day to Springfield Avenue and Meagan Boulevard. If the birds are sowing the grass, I mean, sowing the seeds, when you get to King Street, the street sign and a few feet back on Springfield Avenue, observe if it hasn't been cut, the thick patch of Johnson grass. I have a picture here. This is North Eleventh Street of vacant lot, Johnson grass. It's been weeds, but this is Johnson grass. Now, and if you look close at this picture, you see the seeds. If this amount of seeds is permitted to go to seeds and sprout, the city of Gaston, Mr. Stovall, Mr. Ashley don't have a problem now besides what you're going to have. My question was, when I went to Mr. Truitt, and I started with them, Mr. Truitt and Mr. Ashley, I haven't been to Glencoe in recent years with my neighbor Jake Bradford and I. I have been in Glencoe and they unlocked this gate and the city of personnel go in, I was going in too. We had other issues in District Three. But that's not why I'm here this morning. This is a corner of Bray Street. And by the way, when I came out through there this morning, someone has taken the street sign.
Ms. U. Banks? Ms. U. Banks?
Yes.
Your five minutes is up. Can you kind of, just kind of wind it up for us a little bit here, please, ma'am?
All right. You might wanna see another picture of Johnson grass on the corner of Bray. When the public works used to keep that corner cut, it's a triangle. Young children, cars, low, small cars, if you're coming up Abercrombie, you can't see off of Bray. If you go on Bray, you can't see on Abercrombie. Not only that, one of the prettiest sites and they cut this last week, last Thursday or Friday. You got that bottom Tuscaloosa Avenue. I had the experience last Wednesday morning going out Abercrombie Avenue. I had to stick my vehicle in the street and facing a pickup truck just a few feet away because I could not see the small pickup truck. The back corner has been cut. The city has cut it. Johnson grass is the only reason why I'm here this morning. I asked to speak about wild grass. Now, it has been interesting that these two public work officials came before me with all these stats today. Now, you're saying my time is up. I wanna thank you. But I'm not going anywhere 'cause I've been around for seventy-some odd years. But hopefully that all of us together can work at this. But I am police chief. But I am police chief and concerned. This is like having vandalism. If someone had taken and sprayed my car with paint, well, I know what Johnson grass takes away from property. Now, Red Bond has some chemical there called Insure that will kill this, but you can't grow anything there for years after putting that kind of chemical in there. That's why I say it's an act of vandalism. Now, where the Johnson grass seeds are coming from, who's distributing them, I don't know, but I pray I don't ever catch anybody putting it on my property.
Okay, Ms. Eubanks, if you will, just give Mr. Ashley, Mr. Stovall, and talk with them about all this right here. I think they might could help you in some way, and we appreciate you coming today, and thank you for everything you informed us about. That brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Gotten, would you like to go first, please?
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything? Okay. Councilman Reed, would you like to go next?
I use Roundup, I shoot that Johnson grass, and it, and it kills it, and then I can kind of mow it. And that's what I say, but I think the city's been doing that. The Boomers All-American Barber Spa, those real nice people, and it's gonna be a success, 'cause I'm gonna go over there and protect it. I just wanna get that in. We were asked to go to North Gaston Baptist Church on Sunday for Friends Day. I knew, uh, they said you had some other commitment, mayor, and that was good. I went, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Phil Walter did a, did a great job, good speech. The pastor over there is David Chandler. He treated me real nice, called my name, I stood up, you know, and everybody clapped. Really nice. That makes me feel good, but they accepted me over, and I just had a blast the other week, I really did. We had a good meeting at Homer Enfrenkens House on the neighborhood meeting, was on police work in that area. We got a whole lot done. Mike Hilton went out and helped us a bunch with that. EMA got a bunch of information there. So everything turned out great, but that's all I have.
Councilman Stewart?
I would like to invite everybody to a, a event that's gonna happen at the Pittman Theater this Friday night. Uh, you know, we talked about trying to steer young people into making good decisions and wise decisions and no bad decisions as they come up, and this young man is starting a ministry to deal with that, and I think it'd be very worthwhile for anybody to come out and hear his message. That's the Pittman Theater this coming Friday night. Doors open at six, and the program will start at six-thirty. It's a free event, and I think the man has a real good message that would benefit all of us, so we invite you out. That's all I have.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to go to Handy Chapel, AME Church, yes, Sunday, I'm sorry, two days ago. Sunday, we had the opportunity to go to Handy Chapel for community leaders' get-together, and it was very informative. Councilman Williams, myself, and the police chief were there from the city, and we just, it was a very informal gathering. We, we discussed some issues, you know, that, that, that some of the parishioners there had a concern about, and then we let them give us some things that they had a concern about. So it was very, it was very informative. I, 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 the pastor there, Reverend Robinson, ha- has assured us that she will continue this process of gathering community leaders together so that we can all discuss things that are, that are of a concern to all of us as a community. So look, I look forward to her continuing those, those meetings and, and for us to have good times and, and participation from, from, from all of our community leaders, all community leaders elected and otherwise. We have a, an opportunity on Mondays, this coming Monday again, to go to the Water Wall for Jazz at the Waterfall, at the Water Wall with DJ Buster. So it's eleven to one, we come down and listen to jazz, you know, and, and bring you lunch. It's, the, the Water Wall is between the Pittman Theater and the Senior Activity Building, and it's a very, very good atmosphere. We, we listen to jazz, you know, we eat our lunch. Jonathan Chandler had a meeting down there while we were eating lunch the last week, so it's, it's a, it's a good event, so I encourage you to come out and, and, and relax to some beautiful jazz. We will be having our district meeting in District One on Monday. That will be Monday, August the twentieth, at six P M. at the East Gaston Recreation Center. I encourage all residents of District One and anyone in the city of Gaston who's interested in knowing what we're doing or what's going on in the city, to please be there and attend us. We will have Brian Harbison as our guest, who is the building department supervisor, but Brian will be there to answer questions, to give you insight on to, as to what's happening as far as building in, in the city of Gaston is concerned. Please come out and, and, and join us. You know, we, with politics is, you know, is, is a strange, is a strange phenomenon, you know. We've been, for the past two years that I've been affiliated with the, with the city council here, we've been going to National League of City, uh, uh, functions, we've gone to Alabama League of Municipalities functions, and everything that we gather from all of those functions is that the mandates will be made in Washington, D.C. and in Montgomery, Alabama, without there being any funding for those mandates. Now, your local officials here, the ones you see here in front of you, and your county commissioners, are gonna be the ones who are gonna have to make decisions, who are gonna have to, uh, come up with funding to continue the services that we are intent on giving or providing for you. So, you know, it, it, it's a tough thing, you know, we, we need help from our legislature. Every time you get the opportunity, would you please call your legislators and let them know where you stand, what needs to be done, how we can continue to improve our situation here in Gaston, Alabama? Whatever happens in Montgomery Mobile, you know, Birmingham, you know, that's, that's a little concern to me. What happens here in Gaston is my concern, and we need those legislators on our side to help us to do what we need to do, because it's, it's just like water. Water runs downhill, and here we are trying to make, 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 make do with what we have without any tax increases. So bear with us, you know, we're gonna do the best we can, we're gonna be of service, and we're gonna do the best we can with what we've been charged to do. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. Again, I do wanna thank North Gaston Baptist Church for inviting us out. Had a, I had a conflicting event that didn't allow me to make theirs, but, but do wanna, again, thank them for that, thank Pastor Chandler for that, that invite. Also wanna thank Pastor Robinson for the event at Handy Chapel. Very, very interesting and very meaningful dialogue with the folks there at Handy Chapel. One, one of the things that was raised at Handy Chapel was something that I think you guys know is near, near and dear to me, and I won't call him by name, but the individual that raised that concern is, is here today, and it's the prospect of afternoon and evening meetings. So, you know, the, the response that I gave to that is quite simple, and I won't spend too much time here, but, you know, we historically have met in the morning. I think the city of Gaston is one of a couple cities that still meet in the mornings, and I think as we continue down that path, which is fine, I mean, I think if we continue down that path, we'll continue to see an absence of youth in our political pipeline. So I think it's important for us to be open to the idea of at least one, maybe two of our monthly meetings, or I'm sorry, of our weekly meetings being conducted in the afternoons or evenings to allow working people, both old and young, to be quite honest, but working people, to participate in the political process. And, and again, you know, that, that's open for debate, but I think it's important for us to consider that, because I, I, you know, I've been a working adult most of the time that I've been involved in the political process, and it's very difficult to, as a, as a working individual, to participate in this process. And, and we miss out on a, on a huge brain trust and, and a lot of technical skills by not including working individuals in our political process. So again, let's be open to that, and, and I hope that generates some discussion down the road. The last thing is, I had the opportunity to speak at the, at the Atala Summer Enrichment banquet on Saturday, and that was, it was just good to be able to go back to Atala and see some old faces. Got a chance to spend some considerable time with State Senator Larry Means, and it was just good to see him there. But, and we talked a whole lot about math and science and the need for us to really drive that in our education system. So, again, I do wanna make this very brief point. If, if you are, if you have any influence over a young person and their, their career choices in the near future, encourage them to head down the path of math and science, some level of career in math and science, because that is the economy of tomorrow. Much of what we see now in the way of job creation, there are jobs out there that are being created, but if you just have a degree in anything, you're not gonna be qualified for those jobs that are out there. So again, that's just a, a point that I wanted to make in terms of driving our children to really get involved. The state of Alabama is performing very poorly. We're forty, forty-fifth and forty-seventh in a number of indexes that rate educational performance. While we do have a very solid career tech model in the state of Alabama, we perform very poorly as it relates to math and science indexes. So again, that's something we should keep on our radar as we are guiding our young people. Thank you.
Councilman Avery?
Yes, I wanna thank Mike for this list and this information, and I know they're in our district now, so I appreciate that, 'cause maybe the calls will stop now on the grass cutting that he's over there. But I was looking at this list, and there's forty-one items listed on the front page, first page. Out of the forty-one items, there's only six that are not state of Alabama listed or city of Gaston. I mean, so that tells you where the problem is. So hopefully, we can get something pushed through on the state level so we can start purchasing some of this property and getting it back in hands of the property, I mean, to individuals so they can get back on the tax road. That's the other thing, too. If it says the state of Alabama, they ain't paying taxes on it, so we're losing money there, so we need to do a better job, like I said, have a fire sale and sell some of this property if we can get our hands on it. Two quick announcements, due to the fact that we're going over to the football game this Thursday night, and by the way, there's still a few seats left on the bus if anybody still wanna go to the Falcons and Cincinnati Bengals football game. That's, this Thursday night is forty-five dollars, so we'll be going over on, on Thursday. Due to that fact, my district meeting will be Saturday morning at ten A.M. at the Carver Community Center, and so we're asking everybody to, to please come out Saturday morning at ten, and we will see you there.
All right. I just wanna remind everyone that this is the third Saturday in August. We will be having Music on Meagan at the gazebo, starts at six, ends at ten. We've got, I think, three bands lined up. As usual, there'll be free food there, and Labor Day, I think it's like the second of September, if I'm not mistaken, or the third, we'll have our big singing and have a little talk about Labor Day down there, and there'll be some old cars, some motorcycles down there, plenty of music. I think that's gonna start about three o'clock that day. And also, I wanna remind everyone that in South Gaston, from airport down to central, we're gonna start a Save Our Neighborhood meeting. It'll be August the twenty-first, which will be next Tuesday night at five-thirty at Banks Park, and the chief will be there, and Ms. Carter will be there to explain to you how we can start our Save Our Neighborhood meeting. And on that note, if I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have one other thing I forgot about, Mr. President. School, school will be starting next week.
That's right.
And, you know, we have gone, this past weekend, there were three or four back-to-school events, and I know one was at Quality of Life, had one at Any Arch, where they had a great turnout, and another one was at New Liberty Tabernacle on Saturday also, where the kids are, are there, and whenever the kids are gathered like that, you know, go attend these gatherings so that those of you who, who are interested can help guide and lead our youngsters, you know, as we get ready to, 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 to start another school year. There will be several more this weekend, and then, of course, there'll be several other events community-wide that are scheduled for the next three or four weeks, but I encourage you to go out and participate, grandmothers, grandfathers, aunts, uncles, you know, participate to the degree that you can. And in the school zones, chief, when they start up again, I want, we would love a police, a policeman there in the school zones in the afternoons, in the mornings, especially those areas where we have a high incidence of speeding through those school zones. We want some tickets written in the school zones where people just completely do not even care that the kids are trying to cross the street. So I please, don't have the officers, do not be afraid to write tickets, and necessary take people on, on up to the county up there, since, until ICE decides that they're gonna pull the contract. Thank you.
Mayor? I had a question about mosquito spraying. Jeremy, you may know this. The way I understand it, we don't spray regular routes anymore. Is that correct? And if somebody has a problem and calls, then we go out and spray the air, but we don't have regular routes anymore? That's some more of the bureaucratic hand downs.
Chief, I need to see the chief after the meeting. I've got a person here who needs to talk to you. Okay.
Do I have a second motion? We adjourn.
So move.
We adjourn.